Welcome to the Tuesday, October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Mass General Law allows for remote participation at public meetings until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. School community members, when I call your name, please say here for the record. Nicole?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
Zach?
Here.
And we're dismissing Jamie and Adam tonight. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by nation under God, in the symbol of liberty and justice for all. Correspondence?
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm just. I don't, I thought we have some, oh here, sorry, I'm in the wrong spot. An email dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, sent by Will Rome of Children's Environmental Health Network, and an email dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, sent by Marie Sickman, a Long Meadow Public Schools employee.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes for our meeting on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and our meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, school committee meetings as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So we'll move to the vote. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Any yes for me too? Public speak? Do we have anyone here for public speak tonight? Anyone on Zoom? No, nobody on Zoom? Alright, so, next we have business with guests. So we have a special acknowledgement tonight for the leaders of the SMART group, the YES campaign for the middle school building project. Yeah, come on up. So we just wanted to acknowledge you and honor you. We know how much hard work it was for supporting the initiative for the new school and getting it to happen. It took a lot of work. And we're really thankful for it. Does any, anybody else want to say anything?
I would just echo what Michaela had to say. We really appreciate all of the legwork. It was a true community effort. We saw the efforts every time we ran around town, whether it was standouts, honks that we heard in our backyard as cars passed by, on Facebook and Instagram across social media. So it truly took a village and we appreciate all you did to organize the grassroots campaign around this incredible project. Thank you.
Nicole?
Just echoing what everybody else said. You guys put so many hours and so many resources into making this genuinely accessible for community members, both in person and online, and that did not go unseen. And it was immensely, immensely helpful. So just a huge thank you for all the work you put in and bringing this across the finish line the way you did. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
So we have these certificates of appreciation to recognize you for your support in the Long Meadow School project. The school committee formally recognizes you as Friends of LPS.
And thank you, Michaela, too.
I did say to Michaela that we ought to get her certificate and the whole school committee's certificate as well. But Ryan McCollum, Cameron Burke, on behalf of the staff and the administration, and the community, we're really thankful for all the work you put into this. You were tireless, you were dogged, you were informed. You were on top of the facts and your communication out to the wider community, I think, helped make everybody, put them in a position to make an informed decision. So eternally grateful to both of you for your incredible support of the project. So thank you so much.
I wanted to say too, I know that this was a very contentious, this was a tough subject. There were a lot of strong feelings about the middle school building project. And even though there was opposition, you never let that slow you down. You kept going. You kept a very positive campaign. And so it was just like incredible to watch. Thank you.
And thank you all. I mean, thanks to the school committee and the superintendent. You all helped make the case easier. And so communicating your, what, all your efforts and all the school building committee and the folks who've been working on it for a long time, made it very helpful. As Zach said, it was, you know, a village and it was a grassroots effort. So, you know, we helped organize it, but it was really the community as a whole that came together.
But thank you all for your support and, you know, I echo what Ryan said. All the work that you guys put into this, we were just able to help disseminate that to the voters and encourage them to come out and vote. But we didn't do the heavy lifting that was done ahead of us. It was, you know, a compact amount of time and I'm back to parenting my children. But, you know, it was, it was harder. But it was, it was a lot of fun and it was, you know, fact-based and positive overall. So really appreciative.
We'll turn this into a photo op if we can.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
This was great. Right. That's a roller.
He covered him myself. Thank you.
What, this isn't exciting enough?
Enjoy your night. Just love you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Alright, next up, we have the cheer report. So I just wanted to say congratulations to all the LPS, all athletes and coaches across every team. It's been awesome watching the games and especially hearing all the cheers when I walk by or bike by with my kids. Special shout out to all the teams that advanced to the playoffs. Win or lose, we're all really proud of you and cheering for you. Looking ahead to November. We have an annual meeting coming up on November fourth at seven at Long Meadow High School. And the second week in November is elementary conferences. And watch your email because if you have elementary school kids, things are a little different. So keep your eye out for updates from your school's principals. And that's all I have. Cheer report? I mean, other committee, sorry. Other committee member announcements and recognitions. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent report.
A couple items. Thanks for reminding us of upcoming conference season. And I call it a conference season intentionally. We're trying to introduce an approach that allows for some more flexibility for families and for our educators so that conferences and conversations can be had when they are most important to kids. And so our educators are certainly willing to meet with families via Zoom, via phone, via in-person meetings at a time that is mutually convenient for everybody. So we're excited to introduce that new approach. We think it's a more modern, more flexible approach to conferencing. And so we're excited to get that off the ground. And we've tried to be very clear in our communication with families around the conferences. But we still do have the fixed dates for those that rely on those. So we'll continue with that effort. We have a reminder, we have our No Place For Hate ceremony on Thursday here at Long Meadow High School. So the high school, like the two middle schools, is receiving a No Place For Hate designation from the American Defamation League. And so that's on Thursday if the committee's available. We'd love to have you. It's immediately after school. And then tomorrow, we have an orientation for our newest members of the committee. So it's an opportunity for newest members of the committee to meet with the attorneys from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and LaHane, just to kind of get further oriented. I know you've hit the ground running, but to get further oriented to things like the open meeting law and public records requirements and the roles and responsibilities of the school committee. So we're looking forward to that. Tammy has asked if she could participate and join as well. I think there'll be some, there's always some learning for everybody who participates. So that's tomorrow afternoon. So, yeah. That's all I have.
Great. LPVEC?
Yes.
Kate?
So we met on October fifteenth. There is still a significant issue with bus drivers. And Ludlow actually now is considering hiring or has hired some private bus company, which has caused a little bit of consternation because they are part of the collaborative. One of the questions with, I don't know if we have any complaints?
It's been, this year compared to last year, probably compared to recent years, has been fairly smooth, I'd say. We haven't been as impacted by the shortages as some of the other communities. Different communities have buses coming out of different garages and the drivers have designated routes that they bid on. So I know Ludlow is struggling this year, last year, handle over ham at a challenging situation. But it's been, it's been much better this year, I'd say, for us. But I know Ludlow has looked into having some of their routes covered by a different contractor. So we're trying to keep our eyes on that.
Yeah, and so to that point, one of the decisions we actually voted on at this meeting was to offer some financial referrals to, to get referrals for bus drivers. So we're offering two hundred dollars referral to anybody who refers someone who stays for five months. And then an additional six hundred dollars if that person stays on the route for up to ten months, for at ten months. So we're hoping that something like that might help. There's also open house coming up, and I think I saw an email coming out of Long Meadow. I guess the state has moved up the deadline for applications to March first. So there's an open house on November twenty-fifth and then also on February tenth. And then also, we have people who are interested and/or kids who aren't interested. There's a holiday haircut-a-thon on November twenty-sixth from ten to two for males and for females. Monarch School of Barbering is going to be there. And the, I forget who the beauty shop is. But anyway, it's free and if anybody has, wants a free haircut or has, needs to have their kids get a haircut, it's a great opportunity. It's right before the holidays.
We'll put the flyer up on our community.
Yeah, do you have the flyer?
We do, yeah, we have it electronic.
And then on November eleventh, there's a Veterans Day Blood Drive from ten to two. At the collaborative.
There's no update from the Board of Governors?
We don't meet again until November.
Okay, great. Thanks, Emily. So SEAL, there's a meeting coming up on November twelfth. It's Zoom and it's at seven PM. And it's run by the Federation of Children with Special Needs. And the topic is basic rights and understanding the IEP. And it's usually presented by a really experienced advocate in the state and always attended by really supportive parents that are experienced with IEPs as well as a lot of LPS administrators, like the Director of Special, Nicole Paris, who has. So if you're available, you should Zoom in and at least just listen to the information. That's all I have for that. Energy and sustainability also not deemed.
Yeah, we meet again in a few weeks.
And then is, did I miss the student representative?
Nope, Danica's probably ready to go.
Yeah, so we started off last week really strong with the college fair, which was a lot of fun. I got to ask a ton of colleges their questions and learn about all the different options that there were out there. And then all week was spirit week. My personal favorite was Adam Sandler Day. Everyone, well, a good number of people participated. So it was really great to see all the school spirit. And then on Thursday, there was the homecoming dance, which was kind of a new thing because we didn't do it last year. But about two hundred fifty students came, so it was a really good outcome. And then the pep rally was on Friday. There was a ton of different activities. There was tug of war, which the seniors won. The rock, paper, scissors tournament. So everyone got beads at the beginning of the school day. And then they could play rock, paper, scissors throughout the school day to earn other people's beads. And then at the pep rally, students with more than twenty beads like went out onto the gym floor and everyone won. Or, well, everyone like played each other. And then the kid that won last year also won this year. So it was really exciting. Yeah. And then there was the unified basketball tournament, which I really love seeing everyone as a school come together to support them and cheer them on. And then there was the teacher dance team, which was also a great part of the pep rally. It was really fun to watch. And then this past Saturday was the Key Club Spooktacular, which we were a little nervous for because we didn't have as many volunteers as we had in the past years. But it still went really smoothly. A ton of kids came. The like scare hallway was very popular where some of our volunteers like dressed up and tried to scare the kids. And then the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, the Distractology trailer is going to be outside. So seniors can participate, like who have their driver's license. It's a driving under the influence experiment. So they use like drunk driving goggles to test what the effects are. And then the No Place For Hate ceremony will be on the thirtieth at two fifteen PM in Senbee. And because our school is being recognized by the Anti-Defamation League because of the activities that we do to include all students and stop bias and hate. And then on Friday is the end of quarter one. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any comments or anyone want to say anything to Danica or student representative?
Sounds like fun spirit week.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
I can't believe the same guy won twice.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Alright, moving on to our subcommittee reports. We have the curriculum subcommittee.
I will tackle that one. So we had a lot in curriculum sub this time. We covered a lot of different topics, starting with CKLA, our Elementary Literacy Program. We were given some data that shows significant gains, especially for our youngest grades who've been with CKLA for their whole elementary school experience. So that was excellent. Eighty-nine percent of the grade one students were above the benchmark by end of year. So that's amazing. And eighty-eight percent in kindergarten, eighty-one at second grade. So definitely that is going well with the early literacy data there. We also talked about the Exploration Studio, which is a program over at Center School that is a sort of combination of STEAM with SEL focus. And we also heard a little bit about how they have been incorporating that SEL focus using some of the Yale Ruler things like classroom charter, talking about some different calming techniques, and also finding some really cool connections to CKLA as well. We heard some information about some great lessons and talked about maybe having that program maybe come over and do a little presentation at some point for the whole committee about the CKLA and STEAM program. We also talked about the competency determination in Massachusetts, the new competency determination and what that looks like. So moving out of the era of students needing to pass high school MCAS exams in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science Technology and into this competency determination instead and what that approved coursework will look like. And our sort of initial path at this, the anticipated LHS one would match up with what the DESI recommendations are, kind of following along with the LHS graduation requirements, but with some minor adjustments to make sure that it's on the same path as what DESI's recommendation is. We got an early overview of two thousand twenty-five MCAS results. And our curriculum director, Beth Nelson, is ready and able to join us at a future meeting. If folks would like to do a deeper dive on it, we also have that information in our packet and in nice graphic forms where you can easily see all the data organized in an aesthetically pleasing way. So you can look that over and if there's any questions or if any interest, Beth is welcome to join us another time. We talked about, where did I go next? Oh, professional development. So our, oh no, wait, can I go buy something? I want to buy curriculum reviews. Okay, curriculum reviews was very exciting. I can't believe that's all. I forgot. So we've been talking for a couple of years in curriculum sub about how it would be really helpful to have a curriculum review cycle that very clearly maps out exactly what curriculums are up for review at which years to help with planning in the financial part of our job as school committee, knowing when we might need to fund new curriculums for different things. And Beth put together an amazing curriculum review cycle. You can see it right here on the page if you would like to check it out. That takes all of the curriculums from ELA and elementary through math and social sciences, et cetera. And everything is broken down into what years each of them would be in which phase. So there's four phases here. Phase one, self-study and action planning. Two, developing and redesigning. Phase three is broken up into three different years worth of monitoring and implementing. That's kind of where we are right now. We're in year two of implementation and monitoring with CKLA. And then finally in phase four, evaluating and seeing what the next self-study cycle might need, looking at those findings and figuring out where we go next. So really, really helpful to see that sort of laid out and to know what we'll be looking at in the coming years. Okay, professional development was another topic that we looked at. There are new professional development committees in the mix this year. There's a representative from each of the six schools so that there can be more partnership along with staff members about what kind of professional development. And also a Bay Path College Partnership that's in place to talk about some training on universal design for learning and ways for us to move that forward to the next level. That's been something that's been kind of on the radar of the committee and something that's been a huge part of everybody's improvement plans, evaluation cycles, professional development for years now. So some good conversations about how to move that on to the next level. And then finally, we closed out with preschool curriculum. So with our preschool curriculum, from first off, we're seeing a lot of good successes with the full day preschool that's going well. And then just talking about that preschool curriculum and ways that we're seeing the continuity there. So they're using a version of Bridges that is more play-based exploration of math and sets them up well for the introduction in kindergarten to the Bridges math curriculum we have. And then a few different ELA curriculums focused on learning letters, phonics, et cetera, that are a good foundation to the CKLA that they'll be transitioning to when they head into kindergarten. There were a lot of things. There's way more data to look at here. And any questions anyone has and/or if there's anything that I skimmed over that anyone else wants to add? No?
No, you took an hour-long presentation. I could then set down. It was really, really well.
It's not always my strong suit, so.
Alright, next is the Evaluation Subcommittee. We met last Thursday, October nineteenth, to review Dr. O'Shea's annual evaluation goals, which will be presented to the whole committee later in tonight's agenda under new business. So we can discuss it then. Finance Subcommittee?
I think you're taking this one, right?
I'm happy to take it. Finance sub met last Wednesday. There are a number of items in the packet. For consideration for the school committee, the first is a recommendation by the Finance Sub to approve the FY twenty-six grants and special revenue revisions, number one. So this would be an amendment to our FY twenty-six budget to recognize an additional one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in grants. The amounts reflect a memo that was approved earlier this year when the school committee accepted the awards for the FY twenty-six grants. And so now we're just adjusting the budget to reflect the actual award amounts compared to what we planned for in the budget based on our best guesses for what the allocations may be. And it also goes line by line in terms of the actual allocation where we think we will spend the money at this time. And then we need additional revisions as we get further into the year to revise those specific line item allocations. So Finance Sub did review and has recommended that the school committee approve the revisions in the document presented tonight.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved the FY twenty-six grants and special revenues revision dated October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Any yes for me too?
Next item on your agenda is a request for approval to submit a list for consideration to the town manager of FY twenty-seven capital project requests. So the document is four or five pages long. Page one really would be the list of projects that the district is submitting for consideration in FY twenty-seven. There are seven projects. Four of them are facilities-related and three of them are technology-related. The first is for improvements to the stadium, field, track, and associated areas. That kind of goes along with the study that the town engaged in last year in regards to looking for a recommendation on how to proceed with either natural turf or synthetic field. Additionally, making improvements into the grandstands and access for individuals who have mobility challenges and looking at all of the ADA in terms of compliance. Our second request would be for phase one of carpet and tile replacement through the elementary schools. Those buildings are getting on twenty-five to thirty years old and so some carpets have been replaced. But there are still needs throughout those buildings to replace some of that carpet. The third project would be a continuation of some of the painting that has been completed with some of the federal carpet funds over the last couple of years. The town has been able to use some of that funding, but really has only been able to address common area hallways through some of the buildings. It did not get into any of the classrooms. So there really is an ongoing need for a regular allocation of funding to kind of go through and update the classrooms with a coat of paint. I would say specifically the elementary schools, but the high school's not too far behind in terms of the buildings getting on, you know, twelve, thirteen years of age now. So we're starting to see, although it's in good shape, I just think, you know, a coat of paint definitely helps improve the way the building and assets are maintained. The fourth item is a storage container for the high school out on the fields to store athletic equipment, track and field-related equipment and the like. Storage is always at a premium in schools and so now we have to kind of keep some things in the hallway. There is some area under the esplanade outside of the art and library area at the high school, but it's usually jam-packed. So some additional storage would be helpful. Under the technology request, there is a request for phase one of a two-phase project for replacement of our network infrastructure, which would be basically our wireless access points and switches. This would be across all municipal buildings, school, and town. The schools and libraries benefit from a federal de-rate program that will reimburse for up to forty percent of the cost. Anticipate the project being somewhere between four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars. A lot of it depends on the manufacturer we go with to ensure consistency that the components work well together and the like. But the equipment we currently have is getting on the end of its current useful life. And with cybersecurity concerns and issues, a replacement is, we're getting to the point where we need to be planning for that. The next item is, yes?
Can I ask a quick question on that? Does the, and I don't even know where this project is at, but I know the town was looking at adding a fiber provider.
Oh, yeah, fiber for internet, home internet.
Does that have anything, any impact on this?
Not, no, because that would be connecting on all the aerial poles or underground for residential use. This would be inside of the, all of the municipal buildings. So all of the wireless access points and in the closets where our switches connect to.
So that has something to do, one has something to do with the other.
Totally separate projects.
Okay, good to know.
We connect to a fiber loop in town.
Okay.
But that would be a much more extensive and much larger scale project that has been being discussed in terms of offering broadband to residents.
Okay.
The next project is request for projection systems throughout the district. Again, I would say elementary and the high school are priorities. A lot of these are the short throw projection systems you see in classrooms. As they die, we currently are replacing them. But the high school has SMARTboard technology and those systems are a bit more expensive. I believe the replacement cost would be with the same type of technology is about five thousand dollars. But even if we went with. But even if we went with just short throw projection systems, you're still talking somewhere around twelve to fifteen hundred per replacement. And I'd say there's probably throughout the district, over two hundred systems that we have in every cla- you know, throughout every classroom. And then the last one is for an enhancement to the LPD network, um, which will replace some connections for Westcom and building access. Um, now that we have the regional dispatch operation in place. So those are the seven projects we're we're requesting. Um, from my perspective, and I think I shared this with Finance sub, the network equipment is probably the highest priority for us. Um, that we would, you know, communicate to the town manager. I think um, the price tag associated to the stadium work will be well into the millions and exceed the full allocation of the capital, total yearly allocation, which is about two point two, two point four million dollars. So um, and it's, so they really don't have the ability to fund a lot of projects. We're lucky if we get one a year. Um, but I think it's also an opportunity to communicate to both the public and the select board and town manager the needs we face in terms of our buildings and uh, needs across the district. So the remaining um, pages are additional projects that aren't necessarily prioritized for FY twenty-seven, but theoretically would be something ideally that we would be able to address in five years, but they are some of them are really large, roof replacements, fire alarm panel replacements, painting of lots. Um, so it's, we try to be comprehensive. But again, with the limited funding, it's it's really difficult to think that five years we'd be able to get through this whole list. Um, w- projects can remain on this list for years until it's addressed in some manner. Finance sub did have a conversation, there was a a a request to look at possibly adding some stadium seating to the l- uh, field out here on the corner of Grassy Gutter and Bliss. Um, as a possible compromise, I I let um, Jamie know that we might be able to add some low-level bleachers without having to possibly build a retaining wall and move fences, so at a, at a lower cost than what capital threshold would require. So um, we're still in conversations about that, but um, it might be a compromise solution to get some seating at that field. So, so that is the list for consideration um, for school committee. The uh, I think town manager asked that we have it submitted to her by November fourth. So we have it um, submitted to you for tonight, for consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Um, Kate?
I just have one other question. I just remember hearing at one of the last town meetings, um, an issue about the pool.
So, yeah, that.
Is that, has that already been discussed, infinite item, that I missed?
No, the, the pool work has been ongoing for over a year now, I would say. Um, they had to rebond all of the metal components, so the starting blocks, the stairs, um, the lift. And it ended up being more extensive, so the pool was offline for all of last year. Um, based on a recent meeting with DPW, they are actually beginning to fill it starting tomorrow with the hope that it will be balanced and approved for use on Monday.
Oh.
The only possible hiccup is we're still waiting for the handicap lift accessory to get delivered and installed. They thought they'd have it by the end of the week, so fingers crossed it will be operational next week.
So it is going to be functional this year?
It is planned and expected to be functional. We hoped for November first, we might be a few days
Yeah.
missing that deadline, but I would hopefully say next week sometime.
Good to know. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, it's been a long, it's been a long time.
Really long.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Or a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the prioritized FY twenty-seven capital projects list as presented and dated October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, any questions or comments for Kate? We move to vote. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
And the last item on your agenda is informational, but it is a um, a financial report for the athletic program for FY twenty-five. I would say Finance sub has been having ongoing conversations for a couple of years now, at least in regards to our athletic program. Um, each year, there is a report that Finance sub um, receives. Uh, Tom Landers and the athletic director, Mike Capitasta, were present and were there to kind of present the information in a lengthy conversation just about the overall cost and how they've really uh, have escalated over the last three to five years, transportation in particular. Um, so this document really is kind of a comprehensive breakdown showing how um, the program, both the revenue and where it comes from, and then expenditures related to each sport. Um, and so it really is helpful to see, you know, when you look at where, where not including the salary for the athletic director, the program has expenditures last year of over eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That would not include any of the additional support that boosters provide to our programs, which we know is it can be significant also. So, um, it it's really an expensive program. We're very fortunate to have um, over sixty-five percent of our students participate in at least one sport, um, which is a c- a great percentage and our programs are very successful. Um, the Finance sub has um, received some information with regards to potential ways to look at uh, cost containment and some revenue enhancements, which we'll continue to discuss. Um, and probably bring forward maybe some recommendations to the full committee as this year progresses. Oh, do you guys, anything else?
Sounds perfect. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you have questions about this, please feel free to reach out to me. If I can't answer them, I'm sure I can um, get Mike, uh, get with Mike and get you the information if you have uh, any concerns or questions.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone have any questions? All right, next up we have New Business, Middle School Pathway's Policy.
Alright, so uh, uh, your meeting on September twenty-fourth, I think it was, uh, we had introduced a middle school pathway exploration policy and this is mainly to meet the uh, the DESI requirement that we have an articulated policy explaining how we will orient students to the opportunities at the Career and Technical Education Center over at uh, LPBC on Brush Hill. Um, and so it involves orientation, awareness, uh, tours, uh, meetings with school counselors. Uh, it's kind of a, a way to identify, help kids identify a potential career path. The policy also articulates the commitment to having um, career pathways available to students at the high school level uh, through career exploration activities, through drop shadowing, skill-building initiatives and and our internship program. Uh, so, uh, it has been out for thirty days. We have not received any public comment. Uh, it's a policy that is uh, somewhat based on a DESI model that was provided to us. So that's for your consideration if the committee wants. You can take a vote on that tonight. There is a November first deadline that DESI has for these policies to be approved and submitted to DESI. Uh, but I'd say if you have any additional questions and you don't want to vote tonight, that's okay too. But um, it has been out for public comment. I know we talked about it at your meeting on the twenty-fourth, um, and I think it, the policy sub, if I remember correctly. So I think we vetted it a fair amount in in this room, but for your consideration, um, potentially could be a motion to approve the middle school pathway exploration policy.
Does anyone have any questions or comments or motions?
I move that the school committee approve policy IHAIA as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. Um, so next we have our school committee goals. So we um, all had a chance to submit goal, like ideas for goals, um, and then we discussed it at our last school committee meeting. So it's on our agenda again, um, to discuss and possibly approve, um, school committee goals for this year. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, we, we looked at this a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, the second bullet point under number one, I've asked if we could put diversity in there as well.
Yeah.
Like we.
Is it, is it?
It's missing. We talked about it, but it's missing.
It is, yep.
Yeah, okay.
And that was my only comment, otherwise I I thought the goals looked good.
Anybody else have any questions or comments or things they want to add or take out of the goals as as they are in our packet?
It's, I'd say that I recall in your meetings with the administrators, uh, when we met in in sort of that retreat format, that joint meeting with the administrators. I think one of the things you heard was about um, Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of your policy to address it, but I know that, I think that was one thing that resonated with the committee when you heard from the administrators that, you know, they're, they're um, sometimes struggling to uh, make sure that we have Chromebooks in students' hands and that we're, we're able to respond to uh, damage Chromebooks, lost Chromebooks, that kind of thing. But again, it doesn't have to be in your goals for the year, but I know that was one thing that that came up in your meeting with the admin.
And that's something we were going to, I think, take up at our next Finance sub.
Yes.
So I'm not super sure we'll be ready to add it to a goal yet, but definitely it will be something that we might bring forward as a possible recommendation at an upcoming um, Finance sub, depending on what we talk about here. But yes, that is, that is definitely something to be considering too.
Anything else? Um, would we, are, are we able to approve it if we're missing the word diversity? So did you say it was amended?
As amended, as revised.
Yeah, as amended. So if we add in diversity and then also, um, no, I think that's it. Yes. Okay. Um, I move that the school committee approve the school committee goals as amended.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
Great.
Next on our agenda is Superintendent Annual Plan for the year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
So fittingly, um, as we talk about school committee goals, I hope, uh, as we talk about my annual plan and my goals for the year, you hopefully see the uh, the straight line between the school committee goals, our annual plan, our district improvement plan, um, and frankly, even our educator goals. Educator goals have to be lined up with um, school and district goals as well. So my hope is always that all of those goal statements are pointed in the same direction. I have confidence that they are. Um, so I had a chance to, um, at a high level, talk to the Evaluation Subcommittee about a set of goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, I thought what might be best. Uh, we have no one on Zoom, so I don't need to share the screen. Um, so this is the uh, the annual plan. Um, I I just, for purposes of discussion, sort of highlighting some of the, the key uh, components of my annual plan. So in the area, um, there, there's, there's sort of three components to an educator plan. This is the components of the superintendent, classroom educators, administrators. So one of the components is a student learning goal, um, and so as student safety influences student learning. Uh, deepening the implementation of Yale Ruler, we took some important first steps last year, but we want to expand the number of staff that are trained. And we also have school-based SEL coordinators. Um, thankful to the committee for supporting the creation of those positions. They're small stipended positions, but uh, it definitely will give us a chance to deepen our commitment to Yale Ruler. We have sort of school and classroom charters in place at the KA level. Uh, the mood meter is increasingly being used, uh, which is great. And so deepening our commitment to Yale Ruler. Um, district-wide initiatives around uh, healthy digital habits and 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 responsible technology use. So I've been working with Nilda Irizarry to sort of plan some upcoming events for uh, community engagement, parent presentations, panel presentations. There's an elementary version of the film Screenagers that was recently released. That looks really interesting that we're gonna, uh, we're gonna have a, a showing of that film uh, here in town sometime in January. Um, school security drills, um, we are starting to hit a good cadence with our school security drills and we want to stay committed to that. Our intention is always to sort of, um, it's not really reflected here, but to up the complexity of those school security drills, just to sort of increasingly get staff to practice that avoid, deny, defend, response. Um, staff and administrative training on uh, preventing and responding to acts of hate bias, bullying and harassment. So this is a, a really critical part of our district improvement plan to make sure that we are building capacity all the time to respond to acts of hate and bias in our schools and the no place for hate designation that Long Meadow High is achieving is is a good evidence that I think we're making some headway there, but we want to stay committed to that and and continue with training. Um, in the, another student learning goal relating to academic rigor and revelant, uh, relevance. Deepening our use of Panorama, this is the, the data warehouse, the unifieds, uh, data platform that we have adopted. And it's been a regular discussion with our administrators to uh, think about how we can use Panorama in very aligned and consistent ways. And I, our, our sense is that if we are using Panorama in really purposeful ways, that it will align a lot of our intervention work across all schools. Uh, in fact, it's on our admin agenda tomorrow, uh, to talk about that. Uh, Panorama's a, an important tool for us. We want to make sure it's synced up with our student information system, uh, Power School, to make sure that those two systems are talking. So uh, Tom's been involved with that and talking to our IT staff to ensure that that's happening. Uh, and then really having agreed upon expectations around how or what data we're going to enter and what's going to be available to staff when we're trying to come up with intervention plans. Um, we're also making headway with some Panorama, um, SEL surveys, um, student and family surveys. So uh, we're excited to have that information represented in Power School and Panorama rather, and accessible as well. This one I, 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 um, I sort of put in bold print, initiate a review of Long Meadow's graduation requirements and competency determination. So uh, Nicole mentioned earlier that Curriculum Sub had been talking about um, how we're going to define the competency determination at the high school, given that the MCAS test is no longer a basis for that CD, the competency determination. And so right now, because we have students that are sort of already enrolled with us at the high school, we, we don't really want to change the rules mid-game. Uh, but I think it's time to start to think about how do we want to define competency for our students, let's say, who are in eighth grade or seventh grade even, you know? And so I think this will be the year that we sort of initiate that conversation, we engage stakeholders to think about uh, how we're going to define competency. For me, uh, it's about, and again, this is, I think this is a community-wide discussion, it's a school committee discussion, it's a staff discussion, but for me, it's it's about, you know, how do we ensure that kids are getting those? How do we really ensure that kids are getting those durable skills that we think are important in the world, in twenty twenty-five and and as they head into a world that is less certain, uh, in terms of what they'll need to know and be able to do? So, um, that's a conversation that I want to begin this year. It's a big conversation. I think it's a conversation that will uh, take place over a span of a couple of years, frankly, but I think it's important that, I think it's time, you know, for us to in this day and age where, you know, we're, we're committed to the VOG. In this day and age where uh, students have AI tools that will influence their learning and their career path. We want to think about what does competency look like. We want to take a renewed look at that. So um, I, you know, of all the goals on, on the plan here, I feel like this is sort of the, um, it's if, it's the most ambitious, uh, in terms of something that could really shape, um, shape Long Meadow Public Schools down the road. Uh, PD on universal design, um, one of the things I heard from the Curriculum Subcommittee is, is sort of um, how do we make sure that we're, that we're, that we're putting practical tools into students' hands? We have been talking about UDL for a number of years, so how do we? We have been talking about UDL for a number of years, so how do we make sure that we're um that we're really connecting the training to the practice? So um that's feedback that I brought back to Beth Nelson. We're we're partnering with BayPath uh this year on a on a professional development plan for UDL. So excited about that. The new approach to parent-teacher conferences, we've we've been, you know, trying very hard to make sure that our communication is consistent across all classrooms, across all schools, you know, communication from me. We obviously are strongly committed to that parent-teacher uh parent educator connection. But we want to make sure that as we move to this new model, that we're sustaining that. It's an important part of our our DNA. It's an important part of who we are in Long Meadow Public Schools. So uh that's something that we want to pay be pay particular attention to. Uh deepen our implementation of the district's curriculum review cycle, and probably should have highlighted it, but it's that expanded use of high-quality curriculum materials. We have begun uh obviously with the CKLA curriculum at the elementary level. But we are going to be launching that conversation with our middle school educators too. And so as we as we look ahead to a new middle school, I think it's important to put us on that path and stay committed to that to that curriculum review cycle, which I know is is really important to the committee. And then uh just candidly, this is a a goal that I wanted to um get to to a greater degree last year. But um I think the middle school project kind of um kind of sucked up the bandwidth a little bit. But I really want to just make that renewed commitment to those, having those, for me personally, those immersive experiences at the school and classroom level. So I'm gonna I'm gonna take another run at that. I know that's some some feedback that I got from the committee. But I'm in the schools a lot. I'm out, I'm visible, but really want to be a little more intentional uh with that this year. The district improvement plan, we are in year two, but uh want to really make sure that it's widely understood, it's shared, it's reflected. Um I I begun working with a a graphic design company on trying to make our district improvement plan as something that's more visible or 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 uh something that's more um viewable, I guess, but uh that's something we're going to continue to work on. Uh but also want to leverage the superintendent's corner and regularly issuing communication that that really summarizes the goals of our district improvement plan. Uh the middle schools will will continue to be a a big focus. Um working to secure local approval, check. Uh and but also leading us in the design development phase. That will continue right through the spring of twenty twenty-six. That's the detailed design. Uh so our work is is far from done, but I think one of the key pieces this year is going to be engaging town offices, um specifically DPW, fire, park and rec. Uh all the town offices, because, you know, we're at that stage of design that we really got to make sure they understand what the systems are going to be, what the roadways are going to look like, what the fields are going to look like, what the security systems are going to look like. Uh so police and fire as well. Um I want to continue to leverage all the tools at my disposal, LCTV, school tours, community presentations. I think uh we can continue to do that. Um the working groups, there'll be many, many, many working groups to uh work through the design process. Uh and so those are already starting to take shape. As the design evolves, you know, making sure that it lines up with our goals, our our vision. Um we want to stay on top of it. We want to make sure that the spaces are reflective of 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 what we need here in Long Meadow. Regular updates, there'll be lots of deliverables uh to the MSBA. They'll they'll expect um regular reports. And so that's something that um I will uh make sure that we stay on top of. I managing design changes, you know, you're you're at that stage where you just want to make sure that the scope doesn't creep. Uh that we're designing this in a responsible way, that we're designing in a way that helps us stay on schedule. But um scope creep is something that I I really want to make sure that that I personally pay attention to and that we pay attention to. That it it we're delivering the building that we said we were going to deliver. There will always be change orders. There will always be design changes, things that have to happen. But uh they should line up with our our goals. Uh we'll continue to get out and see some schools. And then negotiations, we still have some work to do. I wanted to carry that over from last year's plan, but making sure that we we bring that to a successful conclusion with the remaining bargaining units. And then the third component of a district of a superintendent's annual plan is the is the district improvement plan itself. So that I felt like we didn't need to dive into that. That's that's more well-known. So um love your questions, your feedback, uh additions, additions, anything that um that you want to learn more about or anything that you feel like is missing that you'd like me to incorporate. Uh I labeled this as a draft, but uh for your review and consideration and feedback.
Thank you. Uh I appreciate how you took uh and a a plan and what what we talked about in the evaluations subcommittee. I mean, it it's really detailed and
Yeah.
um comprehensive. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Or motions?
Um sure. Yes, I move that the school committee approve the superintendent's annual plan as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
Thank you. And just know that it's, you know, of course, our work can go well beyond the plans and we're not limited by this. So as things come up, if you have questions, if there's um things you're looking for information on or directions that you think we should go, always open to that. So appreciate the feedback. Yeah.
Well, lots of exciting things out here and just, I mean, to echo what Michaela said, it's nice to see some of the things we talked about in a Val sub come through again, but also just really interesting to see, uh it's almost like a little preview of the school year.
Yeah.
All the things that are are at the top of the list and what's going to be happening. And it's it's a neat uh view of kind of what your year will be like. And I look forward to seeing a lot of these things begin and or come to fruition.
Yeah, that's exactly how I think about it, actually. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, next up we have building use for class.
Good evening again. Um you have three requests in your packet tonight. The first is for um the Fun Like Cat um road race on Friday, November twenty-eighth from eight AM to twelve PM for use at the high school parking lot. The second item is a request from the Blueberry Hill PTO for their spring carnival and five K race on Sunday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, from eight thirty AM to two PM. And they're requesting use of the Blueberry Hill Playground Parking Lot, um and access to restrooms in the building. And the third request is from the Multiple Scoliosis Society. Um this would um go with a previous request which approved use of the high school for the start and end of the race. But they are asking for um placement of a porta potty in a water station table and so they can get our water to members of their um walk on May third, twenty twenty-six, from six AM to one PM at Williams Middle School.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the consent agenda, building user bus, motion?
I want to remind about consent agendas first and then I'll.
Oh yeah, so if you, if there's anything you want to discuss, we have to remove it from the consent agenda, otherwise we can't discuss.
All right.
Does anyone have anything they want to add?
I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. So next on our agenda is um achievement and accountability report. There is in your packet MCAS data. We're not go gonna discuss it tonight, but it's a chance for you to look over the data and we'll have um Beth Nelson come and dive into it at a meeting coming up. But it's just in our packet so that you can look at it before we discuss it. Um so if you, you know, it's good to just analyze that data and come up with good questions so we can be prepared for presentation from Beth. Okay, um next is ethics disclosures. So we have two of them. Dr. O'Shea has an immediate family member employed by Long Meadow Public Schools. And because of this, it's it it's advisable for him to declare this and confirm that it will not affect the integrity of the services of the district. And the motions um here were developed by previous district council.
Yeah.
Yep, and the.
Yeah, it's it's a it's an annual disclosure. Um with an immediate family member working in the district, it's important that I disclose that publicly and and um uh confirm that it won't affect the integrity of my services. And so it it this, when I was initially hired in Long Meadow Public Schools, um the attorney to the school committee had advised the school committee uh and me on um disclosing this annually. And so one disclosure um requires simply that the committee accept the um disclosure. The other, uh if there's a potential motion to uh confirm that it wouldn't, in the committee's view, wouldn't accept, affect the integrity of services to the district. So this is an annual thing that Mr. Mazza and I do.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the ethical disclosures? Um or motions, so we're going to have to.
Beginning with yours, correct, Dr. O'Shea?
Yeah, Jack O'Shea and two others too.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that the school committee accept the filing of Dr. O'Shea's conflict of interest disclosure form as required by Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-three B three.
Do we have a motion? A second?
Second.
Thank you. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. And now um do we also have to accept the filing?
Yes.
Because that was the, you just did the, or did you do that?
I did the accept the filing, but now we have to.
Okay. So now I have to review the.
Correct, yes. Uh the school committee, having reviewed the conflict of interest disclosure form filed with the school committee by Dr. O'Shea as required by Mass Chap, General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section nineteen, I move that the school committee vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated as an authority to execute the form.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. So Mr. Mazza's in a similar situation and the following motions regard his participation in negotiations.
Correct. Do you want to speak to that before I motion?
It's exactly the same situation that Dr. O'Shea explained. I have an immediate family member that is employed in Long Meadow Schools. So this is just to disclose that relationship.
Thank you.
Perfect. I move that the school committee accept the filing of Mr. Mazza's conflict of interest disclosure form as required by Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-three B three.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
And then finally, the school committee, having reviewed, having reviewed the conflict of interest disclosure form filed with the school committee by Mr. Mazza as required by Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section nineteen, I move that the school committee vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated the authority to execute the form.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yes, for me too. Um next on our agenda is middle school building project.
Uh not a lot to report. Uh the last meeting of the middle school building committee, uh that committee voted to extend the contract of Colliers, the OPM on the project, and extend the contract of uh JWA, the design firm. And so we'll also look forward to finally reviewing, a final review and extension of the contract of Fontaine Brothers. So um and then we're off and running with uh design team meetings. And um we're also uh going to meet at sort of on a regular basis as an owner and architect and a contractor. So every two weeks we'll get together with those, all three parties, uh to kind of do a little status check in and make sure we're hitting all the deliverables along the way. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So that is for our new business and we're moving on to our executive session. And um we're going to adjourn our public meeting.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in a preparation for collective bargaining session with units A, B, D, and E non-union personnel. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, and seven, approval of minutes and not to reconvene to open session.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yep. Can we just strike that non-union personnel language?
Yeah, I was wondering about that one myself.
You wouldn't need that language, Adam. So if we could just strike that from the motion.
Yep.
As amended.
Thank you.
As amended. We have, great. Um Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me. And that concludes our October twenty-eight school committee meeting. Have a good night.
Good night, good night.
Thank you.